Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Council is now in session. I would like to recognize Councilmember Vitale at this time to lead us in our invocation and our pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Oh Lord, our God, we continue to be blessed to live in this great city of Chesapeake. We are grateful that our lives are beginning to turn, return to some normalcy. We're thankful for graduation ceremonies and rock the park concerts and family get-togethers and for VFW meetings. Lord, there is so much hope for our future, but we know that there are still those who suffer with illness, loneliness, anger, and frustration. We ask you to be with them, Lord, that they will know your peace and that they are not alone. Lord, we pray for our city manager and city staff, our school board, our first responders, medical personnel, our teachers and school administrators, and all those who keep our city safe and functioning. Now, as we come together, help this council to make decisions for the good of the citizens of Chesapeake, always mindful that in serving them, we serve you. Amen. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. I have to say before we call the roll that it just feels good to hear so many people saying that pledge together in unison and with convictions. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bess.
Present.
Councilmember Carey is excused. Councilmember Hamill.
Present.
Councilmember Ike.
Present.
Councilmember Ritter.
Here.
Councilmember Vitale.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dietrich K.
Here.
And Mayor West.
Here.
So tonight, we're going to do a couple of presentations. So I'm going to start by asking Grant Clinton Holloway to meet me at the podium.
At this time, I would like to invite both family members and also school family members to come to the podium to stand with Mr. Holloway. His father, Stan Holloway, his mother, Latasha Holloway, his brother, Trey Holloway, and approximately 10, 12 other family members. So please, please come and stand around him. Don't, don't be, don't be shy. There's plenty of room. Come on down. I'd also like to introduce his Grassfield family members, and that is his high school coaching staff, Coach Brittany James, Coach Michael Sauer, Coach James Nixon, Athletic Director Matthew Purrier, Head Football Coach Martin Asprey, Teacher and Mentor Brett Nider, Grassfield High School Director of Track and Field, Assistant Football Coach Leroy Harper.
Wow.
Yes, indeed. What a tribute to him. I would also like, at this time, to ask Coach Leroy Harper for comments.
How about the principal, Mike Perez?
Mike Perez. Dr. Kittens. You first.
Mike Perez.
Yeah, Mike Perez, I'm sorry. Please.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor. First off, just want to say that I stand here as Grant's high school coach was, coach and mentor, but I've learned just as much from Grant as well. Coaching Grant forced me to step out of my comfort zone and become and evolve as a track coach. Grant was always the guinea pig for every workout or new drill that we wanted to try just because he could probably figure it out, but he was the first one to always kind of put and see if Grant can do it before we took it to the rest of the team. And just more and more stories just continue to evolve that way. Still today, I continue to learn from Grant, from the conversations we have now about track, life, both mentally and physically, and just both evolving as men now together as we walk together as men. A constant that has never changed from Grant since I've known him is his desire to work hard and never be satisfied with an accomplishment. Grant, often I'm always asked, what was it like to coach Grant Holloway? How special was he? And I always speak on his dedication to hard work and never being satisfied. Take that body of work that he put in with everything that he did, you add in a special talent, and you have what we have here standing here today. He's also never satisfied with his, with his accomplishments. Grant could never enjoy winning a state title because after winning one, he had to refocus and prepare for the next one. So like other athletes who maybe did one event, they could go and enjoy it with their families. I can remember him, people trying to take pictures with him, but he, he's got to refocus. Sorry, Ms. Holloway, I always bring that up. But he always just had to refocus and get, and get ready for the next event. And even after that event was done, or every event was complete that day, he was still trying to figure out what can he do the next time to get better and do it even better the next time. I can remember when we won the outdoor track and field title for Grassfield in 2015, his junior year, we were presented the trophy, we both looked at each other. I can remember the exact words we said to each other. The first thing he told me was, "Coach, happy birthday." Wasn't my birthday, but it was a birthday present that he said we definitely were going to get, and we got it. And he said, "This is nice, but let's, let's get ready for next year. Let's, let's figure out how we can do this again." And as he went off to college to compete for the University of Florida, it was the same routine, just a different scenery. Now, he's a professional, same routine, but again, a different scenery. So I could go on for days, hours, talking about stories that me and Grant have shared, just growing together, or the accomplishments he's had in high school, all the state titles, the national titles, world titles, just all the accomplishments, all day we could. But I want today. If you want to know more about it or hear some stories, feel free to contact me, or maybe one day, maybe one day I'll write a book. Who knows? But I was just, honestly, I just want to let Grant know that we, as his Grassfield family, we're with you through every step that this journey takes you and beyond, and we love you, and JG6, and thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Coach Harper. Mr. Mayor, if I could just say one thing. The proclamation initiates a very important compliment to this, this fine young man. It is details, but so for the folks who may be listening, may not have followed your career, the highlights, if I may, Mr. Mayor, of the proclamation. A proclamation presented to Grant Holloway for building an outstanding reputation for superb performances while blazing trails and gaining the world stage in track and field. Grant was born and raised in Chesapeake, Virginia. He's a trailblazer, American hurdler, sprinter, world record holder, and Olympic gold medalist. And Mr. Mayor, one, Mr. Mayor, one other thing, as, as usual, you always are remiss in not recognizing some other important people in this city and in Grant's life. I'd like to recognize again Mr. Mike Perez, the principal of Grassfield, Mrs. Beth Pallister, Assistant Principal, Mr. Sylvester Freeman, Assistant Principal, and Dr. Kelly Kittens, Assistant Principal. Mr. Mayor.
So my first question to you, Grant, is how did you do this without any support? Oh, my gosh. I mean, is there anybody not here to support you tonight?
Couple people, but I mean, this is where it all started, you know. This regular kid from Chesapeake, Virginia, had a dream, hard work and dedication, and you know, for all these people, I'm pretty sure someone could tell you an interesting story that helped me get to where I was today. So my hat goes off to everybody here. I appreciate everybody that, you know, came and supported me. I really didn't know who was going to show up. But if, if I had to think, and you know, and I had to, you know, remark and understand why these people are here, I mean, everybody's here for a reason.
And you're that reason. I will tell you this, you know, one of the most challenging things for me as a mayor each year is to do it, to deliver a state of the city through, through our Chamber of Commerce. And I was given a line that said, "Recognize you for your record," and I said that it took me longer to say it than it did for you to actually do it. That, that helped me get a laugh just like this, and then I felt at ease to give the rest of the presentation. So thank you on so many different levels. We are so proud of you, and you know, I know you're just going to go on with life and, and achievements, or this is just the beginning.
I appreciate it.
Would you like to make any other comments?
Nope. I mean, like I said before, I just appreciate everybody here in the, in the city of Chesapeake. You know, it's, it's, this is just a milestone and that, and the journey, but it's a lot more to be accomplished. So if you have to write five, six more bills, that's fine. I'll make sure I come back.
Yeah, I need a lot more lines. Keep going.
He got right in my way. Well, for all the nights and work Joe's done, he deserves to be the official photographer.
That's Joe's. That's Joe's.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to invite down to stand with Commander Mulholland, the following individuals, members of his family, his wife Barbara, his children Kevin, Catherine DeLacy, and Christopher, granddaughter Adeline DeLacy, son-in-law Richard DeLacy, and friend of the family Amelia Libertini. I'd also like to invite members of the Mayor's Commission on Veterans Affairs to come forward and stand with Commander Mulholland, Commissioner Carl Dozier and his wife, Commissioner Jim Kuiper, Commissioner Julie Chando, Commissioner Stan Romez, Commissioner Paul Phelps, Commissioner Richard Severs, Commissioner Reginald Hairston. I'd also like to invite Robert Gregory, Senior Vice Commander of VFW Post 2894, and Jose Vasquez, upcoming commander of the VFW Post 2894. Briefly, the, the proclamation is presented to Christopher Mulholland. Is presented to Christopher U. Mulholland, Commander of VFW Post 2894, as an expression of the admiration and great respect in which his legacy of outstanding community service is held in the city of Chesapeake and surrounding areas. I'd also like, at this time, to call upon a meritus member of the Mayor's Commission on Veterans Affairs and past post commander of VFW 2894, Commissioner Carl Dozier, for comments.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, distinguished guests. We have the State Commander of the VFW. Please stand. And the District Two Commander of the VFW. Jose Vasquez will become our new coast, post commander in just a couple of, tomorrow night. I've known Chris for nearly a decade, but there's so much of his life that I don't know. However, this is what I do know about Christopher Mulholland. He's a family man and a family of, and a man of faith. As Chris has reminded me many times, I recruited him to join our VFW when I poked him in the chest and said, "Why aren't you a member?" I saw leadership, and he certainly fulfilled all of, so, he fulfills all of that. During my tenure as Chairman of the Mayor's Commission on Veterans Affairs, I recommended to him to be a member of the commission. Chris is a leader. His military career as a United States Marine spanned from the bombing of the embassy in Beirut to his combat duty as an infantry officer in Iraq. He has numerous awards and decorations, but I know he's most proud of the combat decoration, combat action ribbon that the Marine Corps issues. Chris is very active in power soccer with his son Kevin, who was a U.S. National Team member, and Chris was a national referee. Both participated in power soccer at the World Cup. Chris has refereed high school, youth, and college soccer, and professional. He's an emeritus national referee. Chris was involved in scouting for many years. He has a passion for researching genealogy and has researched many veterans of Norfolk County and Chesapeake that had long since been forgotten. If you ever get the chance to read some of it, it's interesting. His stellar leadership as VFW commander has led to the post receiving All-American and All-State designation for the past six years. We're waiting to hear on that last All-American. Five national awards, community service. That is, how many, you have to tell me. How many are given nationally? Just one?
Just one department, and we won the top one for the, all of VFW last year.
So the work that has been done under his leadership is phenomenal. Chris has led a multifaceted life and has been a most, has been most successful in all of his endeavors. He gives 120% to his family, his faith, his community, and our nation, and I've always been glad to call him a friend.
Thanks, all.
Chris, I do, on behalf of our City Council, want to present to you, I'm proud to do this. The first time I met you, we were Dancing With The Stars, and you were making me look pretty bad, if I remember correctly, which wasn't really that hard to do, by the way. But you know, you, as the things that Carl just wrote and said, and people said about you, ever since I've known you, were just so true, and we're just so happy for all the things that you do. I believe in life, you know, there are givers and, and there are takers, and you obviously are a giver, and you have been in your entire life, and God bless you for it, my friend. Thank you so much. I would like to present this proclamation to you. I'll just hold it for you, and we'll get someone to hold behind you, and it'll be good.
I'd like, I'd like, at this time, to invite you to speak.
Everybody, please take a seat.
Chris, before you address everyone, I'd like to ask all the other members of the VFW, national and otherwise, to please come forward and stand with Mr., with Commander Mulholland.
This is just for the photo op, then you can go sit down again. You tell them when you're done. All right. Please take a seat. Please stand over here. I'll take you on for a race outside afterwards, all right? Mayor Weston, members of the City Council, I'm truly humbled and thankful for your kind Before I get too far, I have to let you know that ALS has some side effects that not too many people know about, but which could impact me during my remarks tonight. These include limiting my ability to talk and exaggerating emotional outbursts. I've asked Councilman Matt Hamill to take over if, if that occurs, so I appreciate your understanding on this. By the way, Matt, you remember the time you said, said to me, "You're most definitely a politi, politician?" Whatever, whatever did I do deserved that? I've never insulted you by calling you a lawyer. This night is particularly special because my daughter Katie, my son-in-law Rich, my granddaughter Eddie, were able to make it here from Massachusetts. Councilmembers, I humbly accept your word, but not for me alone, but, but on behalf of all the people who, who I've been privileged to know and work with. This year marks my, marks my family's 30th anniversary of arriving here in Chesapeake courtesy of the Marine Corps. We chose this community because my brother, who was stationed here with the Navy, said, "Stay, stay out of Virginia Beach and go to Chesapeake." For that son, vice, I'll, I'll always be grateful to him. Until moving here, the longest I had lived in, in any one place was five, five years. I've come to love this city, and it's my hometown. We now have deep roots in this city and made numerous close friends. A good leader surrounds himself with exceptional people. Citizens of Chesapeake, who I've been associated with through, yeah, through the schools, churches, city boards, and commissions, sports, scouting, neighborhood associations, bedroom groups, and more, have all been exceptional. The credit which you honor me with here tonight goes to them, not me. I was just a figurehead, pointed direction, got out of the way, and let them do their thing. My biggest thanks was to our families, Rock of Gibraltar, my, my wife Barbara. In April, we celebrated our 39th anniversary. She's the one who kept the home fire burning while I gallant around the globe. She's the one most responsible for raising our three children to be successful, independent, and caring individuals. Without her, I'm nothing. I love you.
Mr. Hamill?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. This insidious disease does not allow Chris to continue on. It tightens up his vocal cords, and I don't know if I'm going to do much better.
Take your time, Mr. Hamill.
I think most of you know about my most recent diagnosis of ALS. What that means for me and my family in the short term is still to be determined, though we do know what the longer-term results will be. I am at peace with that. Marcus Aurelius is purported to have said that death smiles at all of us. All a man can do is smile back. I've lived a full and exciting life and have no regrets. I've traveled the world, served my country in two combat zones, and raised a wonderful family. My role model for what I'm going through now is my son Kevin. He lives every day with grace, empathy, and serenity, and the faith of the ecstasy to come. As Lou Gehrig said, "I consider myself the luckiest man on the face of the earth," although it kills me that I have to share something with a New York Yankee. Right, Debbie? My door is always open to all of you to stop by. I have plenty of bourbon, beer, and camaraderie. I am on the last lap of this race we call life. But if there's one thing I want everyone to remember from this evening is, it's, don't cry because it's over, smile because it happened. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you to everyone coming for both of these great and, and most worthy events. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the applicant's agents and citizens' comments on public hearing items. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers who wish to speak prior to the presentation of the public hearing items?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Members of council, the next is council's consideration of the public hearing items. Madam Clerk, please present non-planning public hearing item A.
Public hearing on proposed amendments to the FY 2020/2021 capital and operating budgets adjusting the aggregate amount appropriated and thereby exceeding 1% of the total expenditures shown in the currently adopted budget requested by the Budget Department, and this item is for citizen input only at this time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers who wish to speak at this time?
No, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. The next, Madam Clerk, please present non-planning public hearing item B.
A resolution for the Willow Lakes Water Main Project authorizing the acquisition of temporary and permanent easements either by agreement or condemnation requested by Public Works.
Madam Clerk, we'll just hold for a couple minutes. items?
Yes, sir. We have two speakers, the first being Pamela Brandy.
I think the, the mic's off. I don't see the red light.
I don't see the red light.
Okay, like that? Okay. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Pamela Brandy. I live in Chesapeake, and I've been here several times before and spoke, and spoke by phone as well. For items A and B, I'm looking at that you all do appropriation for funds for different projects coming up that y'all want to do, but there is projects that you all have known that has been in existence, which I've spoken about, Pewsville. And not just Pewsville alone, but even other African-American areas in Chesapeake that have the same issues: flooding, drainage, no sidewalks. We see that you all build up and building Chesapeake up. Western Branch areas, not only just the schools that are important to us, but also the homes and the surrounding homes to that. You're building up around that, but you're not putting any funds into Pewsville itself. And Pewsville is a historical Black neighborhood, and it needs to be preserved as well. And we're wondering, how long are we going to come and repeat the same thing and ask for the same assistance? We have had, you know, a couple of the city council members come out to Pewsville, but I've also welcomed everybody to come out, you two mayor, to see with your own two eyes what we live in and deal with daily. There have been things that we have asked for just simply having a red light at the corner of Pewsville and Y Street, where people have to pull out so far just to make a left turn, and there have been several accidents right there. And when we ask you to do something, you talk about, "Let's do a survey and a study." You have had numerous surveys and studies, and yet nothing has been done. But when it comes down to putting in new development, where there's nothing but land, flat land, you can put in a development with gutters, drainages, and sidewalks and have no problem making sure it doesn't flood. And you're allowing builders to come in and build up quickly in the Black communities. But yet, you're not taking care of the floodage or the other residents that have been having the backbone there. We lost a resident, Mrs. Epps. She was 103, that we had talked about for years, about getting the water off of her property. And you all talk about, you know, your master drainage plan. That master drainage plan was consisted of also Suffolk. And we had, you know, Dr. Cosman L. Ward, we appreciate you coming out to talk with us with the city of Suffolk. But at that meeting, they used Mr. Sawyer, a blue plant that he had of the area and stuff, but yet, Mr. Hampton said that their part of the master drainage plan is not involved because they allowed a builder to build a home, and it's blocking the drainage. Well, the blockage of the drainage in the master drainage plan has come from the fact that Suffolk has not opened up a drainage nowhere. Their COVIDs have not been cleaned. And I appreciate what you all have did in Pewsville. However, there's still a lot, because we in the valley. And all the runoffs, and I've asked you all, and a couple of people came out with me so I can see with my own two eyes where the water is supposed to come out of Suffolk. On the Chesapeake side, we in the valley. The water's not coming out because of the fact that there's a Beaver Dam on Bruce Road, and all the runoffs are overclogged. So I'm asking you all to take a look, and I sent an email to you all about the African-American Chesapeake Bay. Please take a look at that. And also, I want to invite you all out to come on June 19 in Pewsville Park. You want to know about the history and how important Pewsville is? I invite you all to come out and hear of the residents and the heirs of those free slaves that founded Pewsville, and you'll be able to see what we're talking about. And hopefully, you're taking consideration for another resident close their eyes to be able to allow that family and the other residents to see the work that you all, when you say that you care about your city, where we part of your city. Thank you.
Ms. Brandy, could you leave that flyer? And we can get someone to bring it up to the clerk so we can get a copy of that.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Vic Nichols, speaking on various items.
First item I would like to address is, this is good that we are actually changing in accordance with what people had requested in terms of the Board of Elections, and this is on City Attorney item one. We're grateful that this finally happened. I might be missing some of these, but on City Manager item, let's see, I believe it was four. I believe either one or four. What happens is Greenbrier is getting taken out of the TIF over $9 million, when that money needs to go towards Greenbrier. If you look at South Norfolk, that money is invested in South Norfolk. When Chesapeake was formed with South Norfolk and Norfolk County, South Norfolk had all the money. It had all the stuff. And it got destroyed because it kept getting taken from and left out. Greenbrier is already having a lot of problems. Edenway North needs to be widened. The estimate for that, the last time I saw, was over $10 million. So all it would take is one year to put the vast majority of that money to widen Edenway North. But yet, it's not done. There are infrastructure issues in Greenbrier that still have never been addressed. In addition, there's a number of water issues that have gone on there. In the surrounding neighborhoods, we had more than 100 complaints that I have brought up before about water issues. I have requested months ago a meeting on those issues, and that has never occurred. As a matter of fact, no response has been had. So my question is, when we're putting all these places and where everything goes, where are we in that? Where are the issues that need to be fixed? Because when you look at where the money is put, people in Deep Creek, people in Western Branch, a number of them are going, "Where are we?" Because we're tired of getting dumped. And where Great Bridge gets things, Hickory gets things, but we don't. The question is, when are you going to sit there and give the Greenbrier TIF money? Because we're talking about the budget. When are you going to put Greenbrier money into Greenbrier itself? But when we're talking $9 million, we're seeing $6 million moved everywhere else but in Greenbrier. You're going to turn us into South Norfolk. And the only reason why they went down is because the money was taken out, and the good people are left there. You need to reconsider where your priorities are. Thank you.
Next is consent agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please read the consent agenda?
Item one, resignation, Latonya Gray, Hampton Roads Disabilities Board. Acknowledgement for rezoning applications. Public necessity, convenience, general welfare, and good zoning practice requires the following zoning reclassification requests to be heard. These requests are not public hearing items at this time. These items are tentatively scheduled to be heard by the Planning Commission on July 14, 2021, and will be considered by City Council at a future meeting. A, PLN REZ 2021-001, Elkheart Townhouses. B, PLN, PUDC, 2020, 001, Squires Farm. City Attorney item one, an ordinance amending Chapter two of the Chesapeake City Code to renumber existing Article one, Section two dash one, to become Article two, Section two dash two six, and to enact a new Section two dash one to provide for mayoral, city council, and school board elections to take place on the first Tuesday in November in even-numbered years to comply with mandatory state law changes enacted by the General Assembly. Item two, an ordinance amending Chapter 14 of the Chesapeake City Code, Section 14 dash six, to update references and comply with mandatory state law changes enacted by the General Assembly. City Attorney item three, an ordinance amending Chapter 62 of the Chesapeake City Code, Section 62 dash one, to require clutter to be removed from property after notice by the city in order to comply with mandatory state law changes enacted by the General Assembly. City Attorney item four, an ordinance amending Chapter 74 of the Chesapeake City Code, Section 74 dash seven, to clarify when police officers may lawfully stop motor vehicles for certain violations to comply with mandatory state law changes enacted by the General Assembly. Item five, an ordinance amending Chapter 74 of the Chesapeake City Code, Section 74 dash three zero, to increase the minimum penalty for violation to $500 to comply with mandatory state law changes enacted by the General Assembly. Item six, a resolution authorizing the General Registrar to submit a request for a waiver from the State Board of Elections pursuant to Section 24.2-307 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended to administer Precinct 11 Geneva Park, Precinct 17 Indian Creek, Precinct 38 Bailey Creek, Precinct 54 Pewsville, and Precinct 59 Clearfield as split precincts for any election held in 2021. And this was requested by the General Registrar. That concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items members would like to remove from the regular agenda?
Yes, I'd like to remove one and four, please.
Any other? Is there a motion to approve the other items, all but one and four?
Motion approved.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Deitch K. Thank you, Dr. Ward. Please prepare to vote, and vote and record.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of City Attorney item one and four, is adopted by an ADO vote.
Next is the regular agenda. Ms. Ritter, would you please address item one of the City Attorney's item?
I'd be happy to, thank you. It'd be probably the same short preamble as I will for number four. Living in a Dillon's Rule state can be a terrific thing, but it can also be a very difficult thing for local government. We see millions and millions of dollars of unfunded mandates, unasked-for changes that do not serve our city well. And yet, we, as a local government representing the people of the city, have very little to say or any way to stop those actions imposed upon us, whether we asked for them or not. Normally, we have not. So while I understand, I believe this is the first, I've talked a lot about this over the years I've been here. This is probably the first time I'm going to take this kind of action, because this is a case where my conscience just does not allow me any longer to accept the pragmatism of, "We have no choice." So consequently, I'm not able to support the change in the election date. This was mandated to us without us requesting it, nor were we informed or allowed to have an opinion. This was forced upon the city and the people of this city by a very small minority of people, and I just, my conscience will not allow me to support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter. Certainly understand it. Do we have a motion? We need to deal with this item before we go to the next. We have a motion regarding...
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion to approve. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk? I'm sorry, we did vote.
Motion to approve City Attorney item one is adopted by a three-four-six to two vote, with Councilmembers Ike and Ritter voting in opposition.
Thank you. Item four, Ms. Ritter?
Thank you. Perhaps, to me, again, choosing to voice my conscience over pragmatism, this is an even more egregious act that has been done to us and to all the citizens of this city without thought of their safety. To restrict the abilities of our law enforcement professionals to keep law and order puts every citizen of this city at risk. I have to say, I don't believe I have ever been involved or visiting an organization that has not requested more law enforcement personnel and stepped up enforcement of our laws. So again, I just have to, you know, I know it's a pyrrhic vote, but I'm just going to have to follow my conscience on this one, too, and not support the changes in the laws that restrict the ability of law enforcement to keep our city safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Once again, do we have a motion?
I have a question, if I could. This is for the City Attorney, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
While I don't disagree with Councilwoman Ritter's comments, particularly on this issue, what would be the effect if the council were to follow suit with what Councilwoman Ritter is advocating for? If we were to vote in opposition to conforming our local ordinance with what the General Assembly is mandating, what would that do to the city?
In this instance, it would render Section 74 dash seven of the City Code unenforceable.
What would that mean, then, for the city?
It would mean that the city's ability to enforce Section 74 dash seven, stopping vehicles for inspection or to secure information, which is the one section of our code where this is viable, without adding this phrase unless otherwise prohibited by law, would mean that in those instances in which the stop occurred without regard to the state law prohibitions that have been enacted by the General Assembly, that those charges could not be successfully brought.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I might, I do want to correct something.
Please, Ms. Ritter.
I'm not advocating. I'm making a statement of conscience. So not advocating for anybody else's vote. If I did choose to do that, I would make a motion. I'm voicing my conscience. After many years of imposition, I'm just past the point of allowing, not allowing, but agreeing to things that go against my basic principles. And I just won't do that where the safety of our citizens come in. Thank you.
Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Thank you. Dr. Deitch K. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bass. Council, please prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk.
Motion to approve City Attorney item four is adopted by a six to two vote, with Councilmembers Ike and Ritter voting in opposition.
Thank you very much. Next is regular agenda items. Mr. Manager?
Item one is to request to amend the Fiscal
Item one is to request to amend the fiscal year twenty-one capital improvement budget to create the Kempsville Road resurfacing and the Mount Pleasant Road resurfacing projects, and to appropriate $1,500,000 awarded by the Virginia Department of Transportation for those projects requested by Public Works.
Move approval.
Thank you, Dr. Ward.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Any discussion?
Could I ask a question?
Please do.
Mr. Manager, we had some discussion previously about what is the extent of that insofar as the extent of the project?
I believe Mr. Sorey is in the audience. Mr. Sorey, could you come up and describe the project descriptions?
Thank you, Mr. Sorey.
There we go. All right, there you go. Thank you. There are a couple of maps in the package, and so based on those, the sections that we're looking at are on Kempsville Road, basically going from the city limits south. Bear with me here as I review this. And then going from Kempsville Road, basically from Woodford Drive to just east of the bypass. And then on the Mount Pleasant Road portion-- bear with me. And the Mount Pleasant Road portion basically goes from Beauregard to Battlefield Boulevard. And just a little bit of history on this project. So yeah, this is, you know, through the state of good repair program where we're able to leverage a modest amount of local funding for the state and federal dollars. So we're leveraging $200,000 to get 1.3 million.
Thank you, Mr. Sorey. And the reason I brought that up, not I didn't mean to put you on the spot, is just that we have access to the extent of this in the packet, but folks listening maybe have some questions about, so I appreciate you clarifying that.
May I, while Mr. Sorey's here? Speaking of Mount Pleasant Road, may I?
Yes.
When do you anticipate the widening project to begin?
We have met with the contractor. We've got them reengaged. I expect it to start in earnest in July.
Thank you, Mr. Sorey.
Yes, ma'am.
Council members, please prepare to vote. We do have a motion for approval. Please prepare to vote. Vote and record.
Motion to approve the request as presented is adopted by an ADO vote.
Item two is a request for the appropriation of $180,589 to the Department of Human Services for the Chesapeake Interagency Consortium requested by Human Services as an emergency action.
Move approval in an emergency?
Thank you, Ms. Ritter.
Second is emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Ike. Any discussion? Please prepare to vote. Vote and record.
Motion to approve the request as presented and as an emergency action is adopted by an ADO vote.
Item three is a request to authorize the city manager to execute a grant agreement with the Virginia Office of the Secretary of Veterans and Defense Affairs for the acceptance of and the appropriation of $500,000 to the Fentress Encroachment Protection Project requested by the Planning Department.
Motion, please. Thank you, Ms. Ritter.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ike. Any discussion? Please prepare to vote and vote. Madam Clerk.
Motion to approve the request as presented is adopted by an ADO vote.
Item four is a request for amendments to the fiscal year twenty-two operating budget requested by the Budget Office and the City Manager's Office.
Motion, please. Thank you, Ms. Ritter. Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Any discussion? Please vote and record.
Motion to approve the amendments as presented is adopted by an ADO vote.
Item five is consideration of amendments to the Chesapeake Public Schools Fiscal Year twenty-two operating budget and capital improvement program requested by Budget.
Move approval.
Thank you, Dr. Ward.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Vitale. Any discussion? Madam, Ms. Ritter.
May I to the manager? When the projects are identified, could we please ask for a list to be given to us?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Please vote and record.
Motion to approve the amendments as presented is adopted by Mr. Ike. ADO vote.
Next, our citizens' comments on services and policies and affairs of the city. We have speakers.
Yes, sir. We do have speakers that did not sign up, but I will call their name. They signed up, but they did not check in when they got here, so I'm not sure if they're in the audience. So the first is Carolyn White. Okay, Carolyn White, representing herself, speaking on Pewsville Drainage.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Hello, Ms. White. Good.
I said back in December I'd be back.
You're back.
I was here December the eighth, and now it isn't. My phone not on.
Just push that button.
There you go.
All right. I thought I had a big mouth anyway, so y'all heard me. Okay, I was here in December the eighth last year, and I'm back June the eighth, 2021. Okay. Last time when we spoke, when I was here, that evening, we had a few things I need to discuss, because a lot of things have happened between six months from now. All right. Mr. Ed Sorey spoke and brought you all an update, January 12th, the work that was performed on Chesapeake-Pewsville, how the ditches and trenches were cleared, the trees and debris. One pipe on John Street had been replaced. The sheriff had a crew to come out and clean the trenches at the Clifton Street Bridge. Ms. Ritter was there, Ms. Ward seen it, and also Mr., he's not here, Don Carey. Right, they all came out and they saw that, and that was taken care of. And then they even cleaned the retention pond that was there, cleared all that debris out. Guess what? I took pictures today, it's all back. Because we get so much water, everything grows fast, fast, fast. We had to cut grass. Some people say every two weeks? No, every week, sometime every three days, because that's how the water's flowing. Okay, now, in that, the spring, they mentioned, Mr. Sorey's January 12th thing, he mentioned that they were coming back in the spring of 2021. Well, in June, you know, it's sometimes it's almost summertime, so spring is just about over. We also had a letter from Ms. Queen Crittenen of VDOT Hampton Roads. Many of you probably know her. She sent us a letter January sixth, saying VDOT needed to do some more work on the Chesapeake side of Pewsville, and Chesapeake was coming too. But like I say, spring is gone. We had one employee also said that he was going to be handling that work, April 2021. So far, that hadn't happened. All our paperwork seems to be just paperwork, no action behind it. We asked the next scheduled work for Pews-- when would be the next scheduled work for Pewsville? Because we were told in the beginning, when we started in 2019, that they do that type of work between five years and seven years. So we didn't find out what schedule they're coming on, but like I say, a year has passed, and it still hasn't happened, and everything has grown back even higher than it was before. Okay, yet the funding is annually for the street maintenance. Each Hampton Road, supposed to be an urban city streets now, receive funding for all these urban streets. Somehow, no one told the commission board that all these streets have not become urban since the inception of 2006. Some of you may have noted about the devolution, that road takeover with VDOT in 2006 with Suffolk, but when that happened, every Hampton Road city became urban, and it was up to the cities to do the streets, but it didn't happen. Okay, we found out recently that the majority of the African-American communities have been left out. I thought it was just Pewsville, but now I know every African-American community has been left out. There's been building all around us. They got military houses coming in with us. We've got now more military houses in the city of Chesapeake-Pewsville and Suffolk-Pewsville, and they're building up on streets that they told us not to build on. So we're asking you all, we talked to you all before when we came, we said, please talk to Suffolk, because they're not hearing us, because they did get more money than any other Hampton Road city. I still got the 2005 newsletter, if anybody want to copy. They got more money than any of you, but we realized and we see and we checked, money still comes in annually for the street maintenance. So I'm still wondering, why are the African-American communities being slighted? Because somewhere down the line, there's some money appointed specifically for this. Now, we didn't ask for much. Chesapeake side only have about seven or eight streets that need to be done. Now Suffolk side, they got 23, and they're passing the buck. And as you know, Mr. Hanson left, who was doing public works. He was the director, he's gone. He went to Virginia Beach in the same position. I know my time is up, but I'd just like to say, we're still working, we're not going to give up. Thank you.
Sonia Elliott, representing self, speaking on the naming of city buildings. Don't believe she's here. Pamela Brandy, speaking on Pewsville, community development, Pamela Brandy.
I'm back again, and I'm still fighting the same fight about Pewsville, about how this is a historical Black community that not Suffolk nor Chesapeake have a knowledge or even given recognition that we are, yet that's where we stand. Now, I sent an email to all of you showing about the African-American history and its focus in the 400K Chesapeake Bay mapping efforts. I'd like for y'all to read that, and you would understand more what I'm talking about. Now, Ms. White talked about the work that's going on in Pewsville. Well, Suffolk has said at their council meeting that they piggybacking off of you all, but this is also a picture of John Street, that an African-American resident sold their property, and when they sold that property that they've been trying for years to build on, soon as they sold the property, the builder that's building up in Pewsville have already almost finished two homes on that one lot. And that's part of the master drainage plan from Suffolk. However, with the Chesapeake Bay watershed blueprint plan, you know, Chesapeake is attempting or attempting to capitalize on Chesapeake Bay preservation, federal dollars, storm waters, erosion, sediment, and all, there's multiple programs that can partner together to help this community, yet you seem not to care or want to understand that. You know, Pewsville is a historical Black community of Friedman funding. Right now, you're mapping all the American historical communities and heritage sites in the Chesapeake Bay. There's a couple of things that needs to be acknowledged. You know, the question was asked about the road takeover, and I sent that information out, so you all can know about that. But the things that we come in here to talk about and we share with you all, you already know. It's not nothing new that's coming up here. However, there's a couple of things we need to focus on when it comes down to the community, because there's multiple barriers as a historical African-American community we need to focus on. One, neither Chesapeake nor Suffolk has provided a state or national historical registry application recognized in the Black-owned community heritage. Two, the developers and builders are going to individual heirs of multiple heirs of African-American landowners to obtain individual parcels. This is a civil rights violation. Three, Pewsville requires residents to request redress both in Suffolk and Chesapeake, and is an undue burden and economic and environmental justice issue, because we're split in half in Pewsville. We have to fight Chesapeake City Council and Suffolk City Council for the same information that you all know, and then y'all said y'all working together for the best interest of the residents. That's what we voted you all in to do. And then the storm water issue, overtaking of Black-owned community wealth through real estate prices, flooding of yards and areas unprepared with roads and drainage in two localities. Pewsville is part of that Chesapeake Bay watershed, and we already know about the flooding. What is the city of Chesapeake doing to provide equitable solution, community cooperation, and partnering with this African-American community? Right now, I'm gonna say not too much, due to the fact that we're still flooding, we in the valley, water's still coming in, and you all allowing Suffolk to allow and force their water on our side, as well as raise up ground level, put in septic tanks on their side of the Pewsville, which I am personally tired of dealing with their septic tanks and the issues that we're having. Again, you can mandate funding for a lot of things. I'm waiting to see and hear when you mandate for African-Americans, Pewsville, and the residents that vote you in, that when we do go to election, she'll vote you out.
Thank you. Are that all the speakers?
The next speaker is Crystal Nolan, speaking on Pewsville, representing Pewsville Civic League, speaking on drainage.
Good evening, council members. Is it, I was a little late for the meeting, is it okay for me to remove my mask so that my glasses don't fall off while I'm reading?
No, you're good. You don't have to wear the mask. You're good. You're absolutely good.
Okay. I will put it on as soon as I am done. Good evening to the council, the mayor, vice mayor, are they here today? Let's see. Yes, hey, there you are. Thank you. The other city officials that are present, and my fellow citizens, taxpayers, and specifically Dr. Ward. Thank you, Dr. Ward. It's nice to see you. I haven't seen you in a while. My name is Crystal Nolan. I am speaking in support of the Pewsville Civic League as a member of the NAACP, the National Action Network, as well as in the interest of the cultural legacy of my neighborhood. And as a source, I would like to cite the October the 26th article headline from the ODU website where I instructed, that reads, "ODU Researchers Future Flood Maps Inform Virginia's Coastal Resilience Master Planning Process." So notwithstanding the future threat of being overcome by James and Elizabeth, the rivers, right, or the tributaries and natural branches of these waterways that reach far and deep into the swamps and the surrounding terrain, I beseech you to hear my call of action concerning the infrastructure disaster that is happening in my neighborhood on my street right now. The land that I live on was purchased by my grandfather, Garnie Parker, for a home and a business in the 1960s. The city line between Chesapeake and Suffolk run through one of our old driveways, so my grandfather, Garnie Parker, built the home on the Chesapeake side and the Suffolk side-- side, he built the business on that side. In those terms, back in those days, we would call it a convalescent home. In today's terms, we would call it a nursing home. The name of that business was the Cascade Retreat, and it provided elderly care for seniors in our area for more than 30 years. So, like many of my neighbors here, I and many of the other hard-working families from Pewesville, the blood that flows through my veins is invested in what happens in Pewesville, on the Chesapeake side and the Suffolk side. Now, as has been previously stated by my neighbors, there's an extreme drainage problem in Pewesville on John Street. The drainage plan for John Street has been developed by, a bit by, an investment LLC by the name of CASA. They have implemented some drainage pipes at a minimal cost. However, it seems the city is waiting, the city of Chesapeake is waiting on the city of Suffolk, or vice versa, I don't know who's waiting on who. And right now, as we speak, there are two new homes being built on top of the drainage ditch that runs parallel to John Street, and a path of trees has been cleared to prepare to build two or three more homes on that same drainage ditch as well. And we already have drainage problems. There are times when water puddles or runs down the sides of the streets for days after rains. I've called the city about it several times over the past nine months. As a resident of John Street, I see the changes in the contour of my yard due to inadequate drainage. My front yard is rising on one side, falling on the other side, and the backyard is just plain sinking. And soon, there will be the pipeline coming through. And the pipeline folks have been surveying and posting markers for digging in my backyard, only a few feet away from the drainage ditch, which is behind my house at the rear of my property. Now, I am very intimately aware of what is happening with the drainage issues. I have put on my tall boots, I have taken my time off on the weekends to go pull tires out of the drainage ditch. I'm constantly working in my yard. So, again, I restate my plea to the city of Chesapeake, and to this council, and to the officials. We need an immediate action plan to address the drainage issues in Pewesville. How long is the city of Chesapeake going to believe that Suffolk is working on a drainage plan when they are not? As a matter of fact, the new folks in Suffolk that seem to have taken charge of the project seem to not know what's going on with the project. Chesapeake was provided funds from VDOT, yet Chesapeake still continues not to do the development in my neighborhood, and they work all over the city. It's disturbing to see the lack of planning in the midst of new construction of more homes on top of the drainage ditch. It is excruciating to witness the lack of concern for the overall wellness of the land and the residents who have resided in Pewesville for many years. Residents who have voiced their concerns for many years, voiced their suggestions for many years, who have been voting and paying taxes for many years. We must have the cooperation of both the city of Chesapeake and Suffolk as we continue to move forward to getting our needs taken care of. As my grandfather would say, it is a shame and a scandal what is going on. Thank you for the time.
Next speaker is Brandon Randleman, representing South, speaking on the naming of city buildings. Brandon Randleman. The last speaker is Vic Nichols, speaking on multiple items.
This manager, Wes, she's coming in. I have to say, there's a lot of, seems like, I tried to take notes on all the issues, from Suffolk's role to drainage, VDOT, historic status, development, new development. I'm very unclear as to specifically what we, I know we've gotten reports of what we've done with the floods and the drainage and cleaning out, and I understand there's some projects that were not done, or drainages that, ditches that need to be reclaimed. Could you just examine all of these things and get back to us, or maybe if you had some comments now?
I can't, I was just going to say, I have a very good hand on, I know staff has a very good hand on the Chesapeake side of the House. I'm not sure on the Suffolk side of the House. I know we've had some coordination with Suffolk officials, but there, as speakers have mentioned, been a lot of turnover in Suffolk, including recently, new city managers. So, I would welcome the opportunity to go chat with my new colleague in Suffolk and see if we can't reengage and provide a clearer picture, not just on Chesapeake side of the House, but for both municipalities.
I think that would be helpful. And to the speakers, I would just let you know, I know you, and we can coordinate, as the manager just said, but we can't control what Suffolk does and doesn't do. That's not within our power or authority to do that, but we will certainly look at all these issues and get back with you. I'm sorry, Ms. Nichols, that we infringed on your time, it is your time.
Thank you. Why don't we maybe discuss that issue? There was a mom that came up here who was looking to get the city to do something about renters being able to have businesses in their places. And y'all turned, oh, you would get back to her. There's another African-American lady that I have seen come up here, and the same thing, was told, yep, we'll look at it, we'll get into it. And I checked with both of them, and they never heard anything. Keep that in mind. One concern is that tonight, I was unable to hear anything in the entryway there. So, I had to get up a couple of times to figure out where anything was, because I couldn't hear anything, and I made some recordings to make sure that it would get replayed for the appropriate people, that, you know, who knows whether I'd get my First Amendment rights to speak or not, because we really couldn't hear anything out there. On the council retreats, I've attended several of them, and Councilmember Carey is not here, he's the newest member, but what is the one thing that has been missing out of all the retreats? Have y'all figured that out yet? Because both City Manager Price and City Manager Baker, and all the presentations, they're outstanding. They really are. They do a great job. But what's the one thing that's missing? It's what we want. Your vision and our vision, two different things. And that's very concerning. For the first time, I saw something that actually divvied us a little bit up in different areas, because what happens is, different groups have different needs. We don't need drainage, they do. They also need something about them roads and everything, because I've been out there, and I don't know what that is. I thought I was in Portsmouth. But, it doesn't look good. My main reasons for being here is, I want my money spent on what we need, so that it looks good to other people, that other people think about choosing us. And that's very hard to do, when you can sit here now and Google, and sit here and look at these roads, and go on a road and go on, what happened? I don't know. I don't know if y'all happen to realize, but those very same people that you celebrated, you put in an ordinance that only worked for 100% disabled veterans. Did you tell them that when they were here? I don't think you did, because I did. I let them know. And I said I was too embarrassed to come here on Veterans Day of my city. I went elsewhere. And you know what? Veterans, disabled, we worked together, and we celebrated them. And that's very, very hard for me, as somebody who's lived here over 20 years. Question for you, if y'all seen that Pharoah Williams has created, looking at having a school in September, but he's putting it in Norfolk, and it is to help out in the STEM areas, not STEM H, but STEAM areas for minority kids. Why weren't we welcomed? Think about it. The whole idea of putting in somebody to look at diversity is not just in hiring, there's more to it than that. Another issue. Virginia Beach has rolled out the red carpet, basically, to get data centers there. Why are they going to want to choose Chesapeake? Thank you.
This time, I'd like to turn the gavel over to our Vice Mayor for nominations.
Thank you.
Mayor Wes, I'm sorry, but I have a request for concurrent advertising.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Gabriel Chapel, AME, Zeon Church, Sandy Brandon Hutchison, acting as power of attorney, has requested concurrent advertising. The item will be heard by planning on July the 14th, and if concurrent advertising is permitted, we will hear it, council will hear it on July 20th. But we do need to take a vote.
May I?
Yes, please.
I'd like to move that we accept the concurrent advertising.
Second.
Do you have the number?
I do. The number is PLNUSE2021-014.
Let the record reflect that that was the number requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, please prepare to vote.
Motion to approve concurrent advertising for PLNUSE2021-014 is adopted by an ADO vote.
Thank you all for that. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Wes. We have two boards and commissions to consider. The first is the Chesapeake Redevelopment and Housing Authority, without objection from members of council, I'd like to divide this up. We have two members who are incumbents, who wish to be reappointed, and we have received a supportive letter from the appropriate authority, and that is without objection. Then, I'd like to first, if council is willing to do this, to nominate an individual, those two individuals for reappointment. So, I'll accept the nominations from the floor.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes. Councilmember Best.
Nominate Rebecca W. Adams and Tara Preston as the incumbents for a reappointment to the Redevelopment Housing Authority.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Appropriately seconded. Councilmember Ritter.
I just have a question. With the large projects that they seem to want to be embarking upon, would it be possible to ask them to come in for an interview? I'd really like to learn more about what they're doing.
I would prefer they come in, personally, this is just my opinion, that they come in as a meeting. I mean, I think we're pretty excited about what they're doing, so, but I would, I hear you, I'd like to hear the update, but not necessarily in the form of an interview.
I mean, I think we obviate the reason that we have these as interview boards, if we don't interview even the incumbents. Thank you.
So, let me understand, the request by the council member is that we consider, if we have more than the three appointments to consider, then all individuals nominated will be interviewed, including incumbents?
If that's acceptable, I would like to do that, yes.
Well, then, with that, we have...
I'd have to ask the maker of the motion, if he'd be willing.
That's acceptable to me. Now, we're dealing with the incumbents first, right, and then the other three would be for the third position.
Right. We, I mean, there's nothing, there's nothing, and the attorney can confirm this, there's nothing precluding council from voting for an appointment, and still want to have them interviewed.
Well, if we're going to do that, then wouldn't it just be more efficient for us just to go ahead and make all the nominations and call...
That's right. That is correct. So, we have two nominations by Councilmember Best, additional nominations from the floor. Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilmember Hamlin.
I would like to nominate Mr. John Nagosik.
Mr. John Nagosik is nominated? Additional nominations from the floor.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Best.
I'd like to nominate Cameron T. Phillips and Arthur W. Robinson.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do you have those?
Yes, sir.
So, those are the nominations, and there's a motion to consider those as nominated?
Second.
Do we need a second hit?
Thank you.
Because we can't close the point, it's for interviews.
That is correct. So, and then, please vote. Madam Clerk, record.
The nominees are Rebecca Adams, Tara Preston, John Nagosik, Cameron Phillips, and Arthur Robinson, and the interviews will take place next Tuesday prior to the work session.
That is correct, and you'll notify the individuals and also council members at the time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. The next is the South Norfolk Revitalization Committee, Commission. There are four appointments to consider, and I'll accept nominations from the floor.
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Ritter.
I would like to nominate Janelle Wilson for reappointment. I know this is an interview board, but I'd like her to come also, if we have more than the four. Like to nominate Dana Lawson, Benjamin Minor, and Holly Hurdle.
Thank you. Additional nominations from the floor? We have four nominations, so a motion to close the point?
Move close on point.
Thank you, Councilmember Ike.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamlin. Please prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, record.
The nominees are Janelle Wilson, Dana Lawson, Benjamin Minor, and Holly Hurdle Wilcox. And it is adopted by an ADO vote.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that concludes boards and commissions.
Thank you, sir. Next is unfinished business, any, do you under me, right? Any unfinished business? Next is new business, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Ike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, I was approached by a property owner about the fact that our residents must apply it up to three different agencies to develop properties that border on our waterways. These agencies include our own Chesapeake CBPA for the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Ordinance Compliance, the Virginia Marine Resources Commission for Wetlands Act Compliance, and also the Army Corps of Engineers for project affecting wetlands and land underneath the water. Other Hampton Roads localities have retained their local jurisdictions over both the Wetlands Act and the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. This means that their citizens only have to apply to their own city, and then maybe the Army Corps of Engineers in order to develop or redevelop their waterside properties. We recently, or previously, had a Wetlands Board to administer both the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act and the Wetlands Act, but the Wetlands Board was dissolved in 2012 due to a staffing shortage. Since I strongly believe that the government control should be kept at the local level whenever possible, I request that the city attorney and city manager investigate reestablishing the Chesapeake Wetlands Board to administer the Wetlands Act and the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Act. And if practical, prepare and draft ordinance amendments and initiating resolutions needed to accomplish this goal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ike, for considering that for our citizens, and we look forward to be able to take action on that. Madam Ritter?
Yes, thank you. I have two quick things. First of all, I understand there's been some question about the code governing the Architectural Review Board, Historic and Architectural Review Board. So, Ms. Madison discussed that with me, and if we could, there is a question about the status of the architect member. I think there's a very simple fix to that. If you could put that on the agenda, Ms. Madison has my suggestion, which I think will cover all the bases. But I leave that up to the planning department and the attorney to make sure that that will take care of the issue that's come up. Secondly, I was, I think Mr. King might be off this week. So, I wanted to ask for the last meeting of the month, based on his suggestions of what to do. I'd like to have an initiating resolution to consider allowing dog daycare facilities, but not overnight boarding, in the B2 zoning district. Thank you. Apparently, there's a small business that would like to start, they have a place to rent, but there's an absence of that particular use in the sick code. So, whatever the most expeditious way is to add a... So whatever the most expeditious way is to add a designation would be great, the small woman-owned business that, and a service that's quite in demand, believe it or not.
Seeing no other red lights, I would like to call upon the attorney to read the language for our closed meetings, which are becoming somewhat of an abdominal gathering.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A motion to conduct a closed meeting to, one, discuss the investment of public funds where competition or bargaining is involved, where if made public initially, the financial interest of the city council would be adversely affected. Two, consult with the city attorney regarding legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice, both specifically regarding Chesapeake juvenile services. And three, the discussion of prospective businesses or industries, or the expansion of existing business or industries where no previous announcement has been made of the business's interests, and locating or expanding facilities in the city, specifically regarding economic development opportunities as permitted by Section 2.2, 3711A, 5, 6, and 8 of the Code of Virginia.
Motion, please. Move to them. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Best, please prepare to vote. Vote and record.
Motion to conduct a closed meeting is adopted by an ADO vote. It will be here.